...favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Very good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Whenever you're ready, Capitol, you can call us to order, please. Okay? This meeting, which is hereby called to order, is in compliance with the notice of requirements of the law. Public notice was posted in the office of the Board of Education and communicated to the municipal clerk, the Daily Record, and the Star Ledger on January 9th, 2017. Very good. Thank you for coming. A little stand salute or pledge, please? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, whenever you're ready, Capitol, you can call us, okay? Lucio, Liza, Darius, Arielle here. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Here.
Mrs. Darnia?
Here.
Mrs. Muller? Mrs. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Ruiz?
Here.
Mrs. Shaw? Here. Thank you very much. And good evening, public. Thank you for coming out this evening. I hope you didn't get wet in the rain, and hopefully it stops really later on. This is our first public comment portion. It's open to agenda items only. If you'd like to say something, make a comment, please stand, state your name and address for the record. We'll have comments for a round quarter of 30 minutes. There will be a second public comment at the end of the meeting. So I'm opening it up right now if anyone would like to say anything about agenda items. Okay, seeing no hands, I will close the public comment. And as I said, there'll be another one at the end. All righty, move on to approval of minutes. We have the committee that holds from September 5th, an executive session from September 5th. Do we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments, corrections by anyone? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. On to communications. Do we have any things, Janish?
I have a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you. Good job, thank you so much. Now, at this point, we are honored to have a presentation from our new guidance director, Ms. Inez Drummond, and Mr. Bob Gomes, our supervisors of building and grounds. No, that's your good, your good. Ladies first.
Hello, my name is Inez Drummond. I'm a district director of guidance at Dover Public School. And I wanted to present about the guidance department and clarify the goals and the services that we offer at Dover Public Schools. The roles and responsibilities of a counselor. School counseling programs are powerful and they have an impact on the students. At Dover Public Schools, we focus on the academic, career, personal, social, and community involvement. Some of the offered, as you can see, we offer many guidance services. Some of the highlights would be our classroom lessons on Naviants, Khan Academy, understanding the GPA and transcript, helping a student register for the SAT or ACT, parent conferences. Also, assist a student with the application process, understanding financial aid, scholarship opportunities. We also, for our assessment that PSAT, SAT 8 being involved requires statewide assessments. Dover School District also had established a comprehensive student assistance program to help students. We have a staff worker. She assists with any social and personal issues that negatively impact the student. She meets with the students in a small or individually. She's there to assist in clarifying individual needs. At the high school, we also have college fairs. This past weekend, the Morris County National College Fair, we had four students who wanted to volunteer their time. Two of the school counselors also were there to, at the county level. And at the high school, we offer three separate mini-college fairs, which over 60 colleges, college representatives attend. Next week, our senior and junior class are invited, November 14th, again, our senior and junior class. And then, on February 28th, we invite only the juniors and sophomores, so they can see what's coming down the pipe in regards to the college process. Last year, we had presentations. We had a FASPA night, the LC night, the staff, Ms. Abel coordinated the All-In Scott Cheggman Disabilities and Unlimited Possibilities, and John Halligan, the Rhyme Story, and if I could do, have a do-over, which was Parent Education Preventing Bullying, Cyberbullying, and Teen Suicide. Our proposed 2017-18 nights include a parent university by Tiger RAP. So it will be a four-week informational session. I have handouts at the end if anybody's interested in. We also have a FASPA night through PESL for December 13th. So that will be informational. Then they will be coming back to provide the parents a workshop on how to actually complete the FASPA. So computers will be available, so they can go through a step-by-step process of completing the FASPA for their child. We also have the 2016, we had the Instant Decision Day. And then, again, we will be having it, Ms. Frye's heading that up for Instant Decision Day. That will be December 7th this year. We invited colleges to come and students, to interview our students and, for those who apply to those schools. We had Ram Poe College of St. Elizabeth and JIT were just a few. And within that day, some of the schools awarded the students merit scholarships. So, secondary was around 84,000. As you can see, senior hall ranged between 145,000 to 170,000. And FDU was a total of $302,000, but they awarded on the spot to the students, along with admission. Some of the programs that we also offer to the students is the COVID, the UOBR leadership, which empowers the junior, sub-school, I'm sorry, high school sophomores to develop their leadership, leadership talents, to become leaders in the community. The Governor's School, which we had two of our students reach the semifinalist stage. Briada, which encourages student leaders, servant leadership to juniors as an award for their past and present activities. We also have the NJ Scholars, which is an intense academic program at the Lawrenceville Campus, in the Barbara Rosenfeld Summer Intervention, which last year, we had two students have a summer internship at Ole Miss. Out of guidance, we also have Naviants, which is college and career readiness platform, which connects academic achievement to post-secondary goals. It assists students to understand their strengths. It helps them set their goals and develop a self-knowledge and personal motivation. By all this, it helps a student with a college preparation. It matches the student's strengths, their, what their major will be, what they want to major in, and it pairs them up. It allows them to see where they would be competing with in the admission scale, and also the cost of colleges, where they would fall. And it helps families make an informed decision of what school would be best for them. We also have the ability through Naviants to, for scholarships and financial aid information. From our department, we sent out not only email black, but we sent out information to the students that they're aware of what scholarships are available for them. Through Naviants, it's family connection, which allows the parents and the students, the parents to oversee what their child is doing and while their student makes, goes through what the colleges they're interested in. So the parents have an idea of what schools that their child is possibly looking at. Maybe University of Hawaii is not the best idea, but it's student-driven. It allows a student in Naviants to create their resume, and so they start their freshman year, by the time they're a senior, they don't have to go through, okay, what have I done since freshman year? It's already done, they've already done it. Next. College Board has announced that Khan Academy is the official SAT prep. Once the students have connected, connected to Khan Academy, it creates an individualized plan for that student. It allows the student, once a student connects to College Board, through College Board to Khan Academy, it sets up their individualized plan through the PSAT and SAT. So as a student takes the PSAT or the SAT, it changes and modifies what the preparation that student needs. So it individualizes it. So I have a little video.
Welcome to Official SAT Practice. Khan Academy and the College Board have teamed up to create the only SAT practice tool developed with the experts who write the SAT. It's personalized for each student, available anytime, anywhere, and completely free. We'll create personalized practice recommendations for you, based on your test results from the PSAT 89, PSAT 10, PSAT NMSQT, and SAT. If you haven't already taken a College Board test, you can take our short diagnostic quizzes to get started. Your practice plan will show you where you already excel and where you should focus your practice. We'll also create their practice schedule for you based on your test date. We have tons of interactive practice questions developed with the College Board that give you instant feedback on your answers, as well as hints and videos to help you master your skills. Mini sections help you practice under time pressure. We have official practice tests written by the College Board. Taking at least two practice tests will help you build the experience and endurance necessary to do well on test day. Join more than 1 million students already using Official SAT Practice.
Khan Academy was probably the best way that I used to study. My math was below par. Using Khan Academy, I built it up. It improved my sports dramatically. I like the leveling up. It kind of makes it a game.
I'm really excited to prepare because it's something that I've already seen, I've already prepared, so when I take it, I'm gonna do it.
Sign up and get started today at SATpractice.org.
So now, the new SAT team aligns with Common Core and their standards. So what Khan Academy has been able to do is to, it takes away, not takes away, old programs taught you how to, if you can sharpen your pencil, little tricks, underlining words. The new prep now really specifies our targets that what the SAT is really now testing the students. If a student spends 20 hours, they've shown 115-point game. If they are on Khan Academy for 68 hours, six to eight hours a week, there is a 90-point jump. The redesigned SAT, first administered in 2016, makes it easy for students. And there's no penalty for guessing, gone, or the SAT words that has not, that a student has never seen before or ever will. Also, Khan Academy, which I love, it also showed, breaks it down for ADP and other class preparation. So it reflects the classroom. I have my second grade child on it. I think it's great. It really is a benefit. And they also offer Khan Academy for our final population. So it really serves the total population and the needs, I feel. All these links to Khan Academy can be found in the guidance website. We also have our Program of Studies, information about Tiger RAP, FASPA, FASPA Dictionary, links for working papers, homework request, Naviants, scholarship transfers, and also, now, we'll be talking about Tiger RAP. Tiger RAP is great. It's a school-based youth service program. The clinical staff provides individual and family counseling, provides enrichment and recreational activities to the students. It's also open, when school hours are, if school is closed, Tiger RAP is open. It's open on the weekend, it's open throughout the summer. They support the goal of developing the student's career and college education interest and for the families. To, both families or students, they have to fill out a referral to Tiger RAP. There are 90 school-based youth service programs in the state of New Jersey. Morris County only has one, and that's at a Dover High School. They have three licensed clinicians, and one of them is my role. Some of the programs are focused on college and career readiness. They also did freshman orientation. They have peer mentors. They offer Thai Mondo, yoga, Real Beauty Uncovered. They have drama workshops in the senior, they supported the senior high school social and the health event. And some of their statistics have found that 94% have found that the program is great. 74% of students agree that they better in school because of Tiger RAP. 92% agree that they got the help that they needed, and 93% of the students totally almost agree that Tiger RAP is a confidence. That's it. Thank you. I also have, for the board members, a copy of one of the junior conference, what the parents receive. So if they, at the end, if you'd like to have a copy of that, feel free. And I also have the Tiger RAP University that's running that's starting in October, so parents want to sign up. And also, the guidance department is doing remind. So it's last about, if we're having a night for any information, it is not two-way. So it's just sending out information to anybody who, any of the parents who would like to be notified of back to school night, or speakers that are busy.
All right, thank you, everyone. Great. Board members, any questions?
I'd just like to say that I know a few years ago, when my son was going through the process, you know, there's a lot to go through, and the school did a great job with their parent nights and educating us on what needs to be done in the FASPA and the Naviants. I was amazed at the amount of information that it generated that was really helpful in applying for college, because it's the same information they're looking for. And they're all different. Some are online, some are two different things. But the, having the colleges come in and talk to the students was most beneficial, because one of the colleges that my son was interested in, he didn't want to do Instant Decision Day, because he wanted to still look around. But then, when he went back to that college, they remembered him. They had already taken notes on him, and they gave him a great scholarship, so it was very beneficial for the students to have that reaction.
Now, you have to agree, but we're also in the process of setting up colleges to do little info sessions to students who may be interested in their school or meet their criteria. What I love about Naviants this year, that we were able to get EDOCs, which is an electronic way of streamlining the process. So the parent, the student, parents don't have to sign off on a transfer request, but we can send it out electronically, and the student can track when that transfer went out to the school.
And the other thing that was good is that, that a lot of times, you might think you can't afford private college, and that going through that process, you're going to need more scholarship money through private college, and it's a mistake. So there's a lot of opportunities.
This is extremely impressive, of what can be done now, since my youngest graduated in 2008. So it's quite different. But one of the things we went through was how the Naviants tracks the activities and maybe the sports that they're in, which is fantastic. But the first thing that came to my mind is a lot of the students may be volunteering outside of school.
They would be volunteering.
And that can get put on, so they just need to-
Yes, they need to go-
-break that forward.
Exactly.
Because I think, I know over the years, whenever I talk to people, a lot of them don't realize. I say, no, that counts. You know, your child, you know, went to volunteer in some other country. Yes, that counts.
Absolutely, yes, it's very important. And it's, and we start with classroom lessons in Naviants, their freshman year. So we, the counselors set them up. They all have an account, they have to sign up. We get them on, and so that they aren't waiting till their senior year to-
Right.
-put in all these activities that they have done.
It used to be a piece of paper that people found out the end of junior year, in a panic, what did my kid do? Or what, the kid can't remember what they did.
Yeah. The whole thing about guidance, I feel like we have to be proactive and also preventative in everything that we do, and we want to help the students. So that was a big goal, and they'd already been doing, you know, classroom lessons, but it's important, and they realize and they want to go into the classroom. So, you know, our plan, we're going to start in October with a ninth grader, with a ninth grader, to get them on.
That's great. Very, it's great. Anyone else?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Drummond. That was a very informative presentation, and welcome to your position as guidance director. Sounds like we're very lucky to have you. Thank you. I have several questions, and if some of these may be best answered on the website, I'll start with that question. What is the guidance department website?
It's all of the district website. There's a tab for guidance on top.
Okay, so see tab for guidance under our district website. Okay.
And while you search for that, I'll start with my first question. I noticed that there are several services that both the guidance counselor offices and Tiger RAP offer. I may have missed or did not see the conflict resolution. Is that within the guidance counseling department?
Yes.
And how, how do we address that? Is that through Tiger RAP? How does that work?
It would be, it would honestly depend on which, where the student goes through first, and where they want to, and even if, you know, the administration feels that their, a situation would be best resolved through conflict resolution. And sometimes, just immediately, when a student comes in indicating that there is an issue with another child, that's where we kind of go. But we also want to inform parents that this is something that we are doing, because sometimes, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
And then, my next question, if a, if a student does come to the guidance office or Tiger RAP, and, and one of our professionally trained counselors deems that that person may benefit from a referral, is that something that happens? Does Tiger RAP or guidance refer to other services?
Yes.
And do we have a network of folks in the community that we refer to?
Yes, we do.
Hi. I'm Abby Burdenoys.
I'm the director of Tiger RAP.
I'm the director of the Tiger RAP.
Awesome, thank you.
So going back to your conflict resolution, our peer mentors actually have conflict resolution workshops once a year. We have a group of 67 peer mentors that turnkey information to their younger peers. And one of the topics that they turnkey throughout the year is on conflict resolution. So whenever there is a conflict and a student either approaches guidance or Tiger RAP, there is a mediation process that occurs if the two parties can be in the same setting. We do tend to mediate that situation, and if necessary, we can refer them either in house to our clinical services or to some of our community resources. So we do have a link of community resources that we tackle too, that we utilize frequently.
And my next question along that same day, and is, do we utilize mobile response through the C, M, or S?
We do, yes. We do utilize. We, some of the, a high percentage of the time, when someone's in crisis, we do refer them out to mobile response services. So we start off by referral to perform care, followed by wherever perform care deems them necessary. So the system of care is very complex and has a lot of different doors. We find that a large percentages of our cases get referred to mobile response. So we do utilize them, yes. And we make our parents aware of that, because it is a concrete service that takes them to the agency.
Right, right. And it's, I use work for mobile response, which is why I'm here.
Same here.
And service, and available to all regardless of income or immigrant status.
Right.
So I'm glad to hear that we are utilizing it.
I saw that, Ms. Drummond, you mentioned proposed nights, but these are, these are already planned. These are going to happen, right?
These are going to happen. Parent university, those weeks are already been approved. And then, I know that Ms. Abel's also working for additional speakers to come in. So these are just where we are starting off our serving clock. We're just, so.
That's wonderful.
And I did, because my son did recently graduate, attended one of the FASPA nights.
And I'm wondering if there will be an inclusion for students who may be ineligible to apply for federal financial aid or, or information?
Yeah, we would never deny student information regardless of whatever status that they may have or be in.
Just because that information wasn't necessarily available last year, so that's why I'm asking to ensure that for any student that may be ineligible for federal financial aid, that they could still benefit and other options presented to them.
We have a pass that's set aside specifically, you know, for students who need to use that information. Awesome, thank you.
And I and my son most benefited from that in-person meeting with his guidance counselor at the time, and we're very grateful for the time that she shared for us, for us. You know, every family's different, and Naviants was not, not our thing. So how often are juniors and seniors meeting with guidance counselors for that in-person college planning, or how often is it available?
They offer it at any time. Students can make an appointment to see the counselor at any point. This first two weeks of school, they've been meeting with their seniors, giving them, submitting information where they should be, where they should go, like in terms of the application, the Common App through Naviants, because now, Naviants is connected into the Common App, so that electronically, we're able to fill out the forms that are necessary. And it's what I love about it, is the fact that the student and the parents can see where their student, where their child is in the process of the college application.
And then with the, going over to the SAT prep, is this, and the Khan Academy, is this something that each student does on his or her own, or is this, or is there a guidance counselor group or a student group?
We did, well, last year we started. Well, last, well, we started. Back last year, Martha sent out letters with, I want to say the interim reports, with the Khan Academy, with the PSAT results. Because the PSAT results that were mailed home had a specific access code that connects the student to Khan, to their College Board account, which is important. So the counselors went in, were doing, they were doing classroom lessons, and then we also were able to, with the English department, move that to the next level with the students. And then, counselors were sending up students individually, who felt like if it wasn't a little too fast case, they wanted to come to the department, to their counselor, and we were meeting with them. And whatever they needed, if they lost their access code, we have copied, made specifically made extra copies of the PSAT access code for them, so that they were, that we had it readily available. It wasn't going to turn the child down if they were going, if they showed interest.
And that 20 hours total for that 115-point jump, which sounds great, is, in what period of time is that? Is that 20 hours?
It would be 20 hours a week dedicated.
20 hours?
That's why I said, a hard time job, really, it depends.
Yeah. Okay, so 20 hours per week would give that for a job.
I'm sorry, let me defer to Ms. Mayr.
Yeah, no, I think that was based on 20 hours. Study period between the time a student took the PSAT and then took the SAT, because the game of talking about the 115 points-
Right, from once to-
-is based on PSAT to SAT.
That makes sense. And, and how much is that time usually?
20 hours, like they need to put in 20-
No, I mean, months?
Oh, yeah, it depends.
Three months?
It's up to the student what they want to do. A lot of times, students will take the PSAT in the fall and then take the spring SAT.
Right, that's what my son-
But then they-
So it could be as long as three months?
Sure, but it could be shorter, too. They just started offering the SAT for what gets now, they need to, for more time to take it, so it would vary.
Okay.
But the key is that, well, guidance is still, is still a good job in communicating that this SAT is very different than the SAT that we as adults are used to, in that it's based on the Common Core standards, which is what PARC is. So it's really more content-driven, and it's not one where the student needs to learn like the tricks of the test, like when do I guess? Because if I guess wrong, it's more points off than, you know, and then it used to be, if I want a 600, I have a different strategy than if I want a 700, you know, that type of thing. So it's a brand-new ballgame. And, you know, Khan Academy, they waited a year until they got the data in, and then Khan and College Board last May did the study after having a year's worth of data on the impact. And the whole key to this new SAT is to start taking the PSAT, and then putting, making sure that you connect the College Board to Khan Academy, which is what the guidance counselors are in the classrooms, getting the students to understand that. And then it's individualizing, based on every time you take a PSAT, it's inputting that information, and they really are getting something that's detailed specifically for them. But, what they also, the students also do is they add the teachers to their Khan Academy. And then the teachers, well, like, I think when you looked at the guides for tonight, there's three of the guides there mention Khan Academy either as a subject, like in AP Statistics, or in Algebra I, or in the case of the reading work workshop, it's the SAT prep. So the teachers then can do Khan Academy in the classroom, too.
They know the student, and then they know what the Khan-
But the needs are, it really helps the teachers to differentiate the students. So that's kind of where we're going with it. Guidance explained a few more.
Khan Academy, PARC, SAT, and coursework, it's all embedded within the curriculum. So the idea, there's a misperception that Khan Academy is a standalone, not really we're integrating it within the entire fabric of the curriculum and the courses. So as you look at your new course guides and syllabus, you'll see that a lot of the curriculum guides actually mention Khan Academy as being integrated within that course. So, like Reading, Reading Workshop 2 is an SAT course embedded quite often within the course, and that's also embedded in the standard English curriculum. So the idea that we're just a sign, and you go out and work independently on an internet program, that, that's not the case at all. It's really part of the fabric of the school, part of the new curriculums we've done and embedded with the learning process, because not only are we teaching SAT, but that same coursework will help with the PARC test, people for an SAT.
Thank you. Erica, any other board members, questions?
To know, what's the highest score for SAT and SAT?
They went back to when they redesigned this SAT. It's the 1600 now because the essay part is optional. You know how they went from a time to 2400 with the other SAT? Yeah, now they're reporting it back in the way that most of us would use too, which is out of a top score of 1600. And then depending on what school students are interested in applying to, whether they take that additional 55-minute essay is up to the student.
Anyone else?
Could you just mention what the district pays for in terms of subsidizing tests? I think we are rather unique in that it might be beneficial since mentioning a lot of the testing.
So CON Academy, free book. The district pays for the PSAT, the AP test, and the SAT that will be administered March 7. Wednesday, March 7, we will be doing SAT. And the AP exams are all covered by the district. It's out of the pocket of not one child. So it's offered for free to all the students that do it regardless. Well, let's see. The AP is different. So let's say the AP, if you're a one-fourth, would be $54. If some students are a minimum like three to four classes. The same with the SAT. The cost off the top of my head, the SAT is, we made this number on the slide.
That's a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
Most people think it's $30. I've been finishing two years ago.
Well, I remember the APs, I think you used to need around $100.
$80.
You just write and shut it down.
And I remember the SAT also, I want to say something like 130, the SAT. And that was four years ago, four years ago. Ms. Phillips, I know you had something you wanted to say down there.
Yeah, I just had like maybe three questions. So for the college fairs that you mentioned, how do you promote that to the students?
Okay, that's a great question. We promote it by, we put flyers into their own packets. We have literally flyers outside the guidance department, flyers in the school. We also have daily announcements. The students have to register through Naviions. So last year we tried to like, hey, let's see, push it just Naviions. And then we ended up doing a paper month for them to copy it up. So now they're coming in, they're like, hey, I need help getting onto my Naviions account. Can you help me because I want to go to the college fair? And right now we have over 83 students who have registered from the college board for next week.
So, and that actually ties into my other question. So for the Naviions, I know you said that you can send last emails. Do you have the capability to track that from your side? So let's just say you're sending them, any of a student who's never opened it, never logs in, never opens it, do you have the capability to see that and to say?
I know I have the ability to see everything that goes out to any student.
Right. I'm just saying like on the other side, to say like you're sending all these emails and you just have, I'll just say my son, just because, say Jordan just never opens anything. Doesn't open anything, I don't know about it, he's never told me. And so everything is just sitting. Is there a way that?
But you can hear it from me.
Right, but I'm just saying because there's a way for me.
And hear the announcements.
True, if he's paying attention. So I guess this is my question is.
There's a lot of flyers too. They're all pink, blue.
No, I know. I mean, we've talked about it, but I'm just saying just like generally, is there a way to know if this student is just not opening these things?
I could probably, I would have to call Naviions to see where the ability is. Since we upgraded our, the Naviions package, I have, I have to go and see.
They all meet with their counselors.
They all meet with their counselors.
Their counselors ask them.
Yeah, absolutely. Because we're not gonna let, obviously we have more than we need to read.
Right.
You know, dangers.
Right. And then you mentioned, two things you mentioned at the end. You said there was a folder up there that talks about junior conferences. Was this supposed to have already gotten that?
I'm sorry.
Were they supposed to have already gotten that folder?
Well, junior review conferences occur after winter break. So they come back and then they start. I kind of want to start that earlier this year. So because of everything that goes in with testing, I don't want any counselor's involvement with any of the testing itself. I kind of want to make sure that the parents, there's enough time for everybody, all the stakeholders, to be able to sit with the counselor.
Ms. Drummond, I don't want to interrupt you, but Ms. Frye is in the back and she wanted to add something about the notifications on if the student has opened their Naviions.
Yeah, we do have the ability to see how many times a student goes into their Naviions account. On our view, we have a counselor view, and then there's a student view. So we can see how many times a student has visited their Naviions account. And we can see that. We also send them the whole list of colleges. And they're out on the counter and they go to their email so that they can research the colleges ahead of time. And they'll know which college we're gonna be there and they can plan when to visit. So we number the colleges. So they'll be able to see. We put numbers out on the table, colleges set up according to the number. So the students can really plan that ahead of time, make the best use of the time.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. I'm sorry I didn't see you out there.
I just have one other question. The Remind app that you mentioned, that's an app that you have to download on your phone?
Yes, Google or Apple Store.
Okay. Is that, that's a flyer that you'll send home?
Yes, I'm gonna have it out for back-to-school night because we just were, we'll be okay for it. So back-to-school night, it's gonna be put up on the district website, the guidance website. And yeah, it's something that we're really gonna promote. Because I think it would be great for parents and it's optional. So it's kind of last, maybe they don't want to see, but if they want to have the information, we have it ready for them.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Phillips. Thank you, ma'am, because I just have three more questions. With TIGORAB, do students need to have insurance? And if they don't, how might they still benefit from the program?
Well, it's, no, there's no cost for our services. In the event if, we do some of the, we do some of the assessments actually that the district actually pays for if we deem it necessary to refer them out, refer the clinical services the district actually covers the cost for the actual assessment. Outside of that, there are no other charges associated with participating in any of our programs.
Thank you, Ms. Barreto. And if a student, because this wasn't, this isn't specific, but if a student is experiencing immigration trauma, for example, falling into depression because of the doctor nervousness, is that something that TIGORAB would also address?
That's exactly what we address, yes.
And then the final question, Ms. Drummond, you mentioned that 83 students have already signed up, which sounds really exciting. What percentage, and if you don't know the number, I completely understand, but what percentage of eligible students is that?
It's, well, any junior or senior, they're eligible. It's not just them going on to sign up or, you know, all, we're not excluding not one senior, no child will ever be excluded from the college board. We just want to promote this system as well, get them usually getting on to Naviions.
Okay, so they can all come, but we want them to register soon?
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Ground supervisor is going to give us an update on our buildings and grounds and our facilities.
Well, man, it's Bob Holmes, facility manager for Dover Quarterback. This number is a lot of exciting projects that we did. We started with some bathrooms this year. A total of six faculty bathrooms that we did in the district. We did them over. Seeing a lot of the tiles were falling off. Beginning with the demo, wasn't that much of a job, but there's a lot of patches and stuff. We put new tile in, new partitions, LED lighting, sinks, water closets, journals, flush counters, all nine yards. That's the finished look. And I didn't mention all other hand dryers. That was the boys' room that we used to over. This was the girls' room that we started. Pictures were hard to take because the bathroom's like that small. And I was trying to get different angles of it. But you see there's holes in the wall, more patches. They're really, really fat shape, but considering 1955 they were put in, it's not really that bad. That's the girls' room finished. Tile on walls, door sealed. Same thing, water closets replaced, sinks, closets, new mirrors, partitions. Future boilers that are being replaced at Northover. 1981 they were installed, about 36 years old. Pretty much seeing their day. There was some cracks in the sections. It's a 16-section boiler. And it just needed some help. Probably one of the fast inceptionists coming here if we didn't do this project. They're being replaced with Patterson Kelly boilers. There's three of them. They're 2 million BTUs apiece. The whole system is replaced. These are hydraulic boilers. So the efficiency rating goes up to 97%. Considering the old ones were lucky, we got 50 of them because of the age. This is a big project. This is the women's faculty room, probably 300 women. It's before partitions, everything was just pretty much beat up. So we did the same thing, took all the tile out, demolished it. New water closets, sinks.
That's here at the high school.
Yes. They're mainly being installed instead of just having a counter town. Same thing, LED lighting, all new partitions. This was the Dover High School auditorium. We replaced the curtains, front curtains, the back ones, the side ones, everything. They don't look like they're that bad shape, but they have a lot of tears. The side counters were pretty beat up too. That became a problem with keeping fire retardant. Just once you get a tear, the fibers, you know, start to go to the kind of coating, like the coating, it would just destroy. These are the new curtains. They're not like a bad, it's like the other ones, part of the color. They have a machine on it. Those two did, nice looking, I liked them. Especially the stage light, gives the brighter, brings up the stage lamp. This is the fronts, there's four of them. They were all replaced and the molding grew up. They go up and down the back, they're probably on the floor. This is the classroom renovation we did at the high school. We did approximately 15 rooms. And it was a, homos soapboards were on the walls. It was like a, it's like a court floor kind of, where you could just put pins in it and help paper and stuff up with wallpaper over that. It was just a, it was an old system, but it was starting to peel everywhere. The wallpaper was actually peeling off the walls, D V H. So we put, by the fire rate G rock up. Spackle painted and new floor hole in all the fixtures. And electrical components, the wire hole that was over there. This is the driveway that goes behind the building. It used to be seven feet wide, which created a big problem because when we plowed it, the snow banked up against the building. You really couldn't, it was difficult to get an emergency vehicle back there. Even our trucks was kind of hard. And then we used them for exits for fire building stuff. So we extended it eight feet, 12 feet all the way out. It goes from the top field here to the back parking lot, all the way around. This is the front parking lot. We sealed it, but more importantly, we filled all the cracks with certified filler. Because what happens is we, we're starting to get like quarter inch cracks in it, the snow melted. At night it freezes, winds up in an atmosphere. So the crack film was real important to do in the project, even though the seal coat and bar combining looks a lot nicer, but it's, the base was filling all the cracks. Seal coat protects it, it looks like an extra layer of base on top. Relined everything. This is the view from the entrance. Same thing was done around the whole entire building today.
Thank you. Any board members' questions?
The boilers remind me that I graduated Dover High School 36 years ago.
Anything else?
No.
Any other questions, board members? Yes, Mr. Becker.
I would just like to thank Mr. Holmes. You look at a slide and it tells one story. For each of the classrooms, they were gutted down to the center block. So it was actually a huge job done during the summer. Even the boilers in Dover, that would normally be one project for the summer in and of itself. It's a huge undertaking. I just want to thank Mr. Holmes. He did an outstanding job. Everything was scheduled perfectly. Everything was done on time. Why, two of the projects actually came in under budget. He was right there every day, all day. We know most of his vacations, so he could be here and make sure everything was completed. I think the quality of work we achieved through his efforts is really something that will take us into the future. Bob, I know as facilities manager, quite often people tell you what's wrong, but don't tell you what's working well. And I just want to thank you for all your efforts this summer in terms of what you did for the district and the long-term benefits this school received. And even in Dover, you don't need heat until it's cold. And the fact that we now have a reliable system, I just want to sincerely thank you for all your efforts. And also, I never got a chance to, Ms. Drummond, I'd like to thank you for all the innovations you brought to the guidance department. I have this in here. And you and Kathy have done a great job in coordinating the two programs. I know Kathy's done a wonderful job connecting with all the community agencies and make sure that we do have representation on a variety of levels as we meet the student needs. I know quite often you had the same job that many of us do. You don't talk about the challenges that you have, but the both of you have brought such, now that you're working together and the two departments are actually integrated, you brought such a positive growth to Dover High School and the students of the district. I just wanted to thank all of you centers tonight for just an outstanding job and for being the dedicated professionals that you are.
I agree. Very good. Good things. Thank you, everyone. Moving on then to Mr. Becker, to the superintendent's report, please.
Briefcase reports, my job is really easy. We asked for your approval for the outer district placement and transportation for the students as noted. So move.
Mr. Becker? We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Ms. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
And for your edification, we're terminating the placement of the positions as listed. One student moved, the other two are being sent all term to the placements. On the next item, we recommend board approval for the field trips as per the attached list. So move.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a very long list. Questions, comments? Okay, roll call then, please.
Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Ms. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes, thank you.
And I do see, we ask your approval for the transportation. This is the professional service report as per the attached list. So move. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Again, questions, comments about the list?
All right, I should mention, we see multiple entries for quite a few people. That's because what we tried to do was take the year's worth of activities and approve them in one block. But that would be a better way, both for the people requesting the service as well as for the board of education for the approvals.
Thank you. And we also have on the list our board members who are attending conventions in Atlantic City. Okay, any other questions, comments? All righty, roll call then, please.
Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Ms. Scarnio? Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes. Thank you very much.
That it, Mr. Becker?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Onto personnel, Mr. Miller, please.
I make a motion that the board approves staff and extra service appointments for the 2017 school year as listed. We have items 1 through 12. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call then, please.
Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Ms. Scarnio?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Curriculum and co-curricular activities, Mrs. Mullin.
I wish the board recommends approval of the following curriculum guides, there's ten of them. Some of them were just adjusting to the new standards, some of them have been revisions, you know, there were a lot of things going on. Mr. Becker, I was emailing you back and forth, but I, it's a motion that we recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any questions or comments? I know there were some concerns from board members about the amount of reading that we have to do. Thankfully, this is not something that we have to do every single meeting, but there are times when we go through spurts that we have to approve them all within a timeline, and this is one of those times. So, unfortunately, there was a lot of reading this weekend and at our last meeting two weeks ago. So, hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to spread it out a little bit when we're not under a time constraint, but we are under time constraints, so unfortunately, that's the way it went. Anybody else, questions, comments? Okay, roll call then, please.
Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Ms. Scarnio?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Thanks very much, Mrs. Mullin. Onto community relations, Ms. Rosario?
We have the many times, by everybody, the back to school night for Eastover is September twenty-sixth, and Dover High School is going to be September twenty-seventh. And I hope, you know, Academy in Northover has a good turnout at the back to school night.
They did. They did. They did have a very good turnout. That's okay. They did, they had a very good turnout, and it was fantastic. Academy Street School is beautiful, we saw all of our new interactive boards. Northover, again, beautiful, fantastic, filled to the brim, filled to capacity. I think there were people parking blocks and blocks away, so it was fantastic to see everybody there. And we're looking forward to the high school back to school night. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Buildings, Rosario, I'm sorry, I did that, that's like the third time I've done that. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Scarnio, could you move that for us, please?
Can I remove the, I'll have to, I move the accepted report for property damage and vandalism of that school property, which was zero this month.
Okay. We have, do you want to?
Yeah, we don't have to roll that. And I make a motion that we approve the used Dover public schools for the Dover Education Association meeting as listed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or comments? Everybody's good, okay, roll call then, please.
Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Ms. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scarnio. Budget and finance, Mrs. Laurie.
I mean, we approve and adopt the following resolution, so let's.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or comments from anyone else?
I have a question about the regime picture and why it don't be used.
We now believe Eastover, and we're using that for the robotics, the robotics course. We've also signed on with the, we have a team, it's called, Pickett Titty, what's the name of that?
The Pickett Titty, it's actually the science club, so that every student in seven and three is eligible to join, but it's the competition where we launch a pumpkin, we built at home, and last year, Dover, Eastover was the only middle school team that even attended throughout the season.
Right.
We want to repeat that.
That's amazing.
It's just part of the ongoing STEM development that we have. Pickett Titty has a great STEM program, we've been working with for some time, and we're excited to continue with it. Thank you, ma'am. I couldn't remember the name of the.
Thank you, Ms. Laurie.
And then also, once again, from Douglas Electrical, fifty-one thousand dollars for the scholarship, it's just amazing.
Fantastic.
We're so fortunate.
Okay, we have a second for that motion? Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, roll call then, please.
Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Ms. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Very good, thank you very much, Mrs. Laurie. Dover report from My Hill, Mr. Brucio did call us today to say that he was not able to attend. Mr. Miller, I know that you had a question that you wanted to refer to our attorney.
Yes, based on what has been in newspapers lately concerning My Hill and Dover, the article that was written was very misleading and not truthful from the My Hill superintendent that liked to share where he stands in that.
With regard to, I guess it was an issue with regard to cancellation of what was called the meeting, which was actually a settlement conference before the Office of Administrative Law with regard to the litigation. And just, obviously, I can just speak in general terms, but there was a discussion between, you know, both boards, council, about how fruitful it would be to have a settlement conference, you know, at this time and stage of litigation. So, it's decided that settlement conference, at this point, based on both districts' legal positions in the case, would not be fruitful, the determination was made to put it off for now, and obviously, that does not foreclose, you know, a conference or any other discussions as the litigation ensues.
Can I add some questions? Very good, thank you very much, everyone. Okay, on to old business. We do have the code of conduct discussion again that still sits on the table here. We have our board self-assessment discussion. I would like to flip those. I feel that perhaps the code of conduct discussion would be more appropriate after we discuss the self-evaluation, the board member's self-evaluation. So, I'm going to start with that, and if, everyone has their self-evaluation, all the board members do have a copy of it. He was in the last packet, wasn't he, from the last meeting? Okay. I'm going to, it's sixteen to eighteen pages long, and I'm going to try and give a good overview of the entire thing. Board members have had the opportunity to digest it for two weeks now, so they are fully aware of what it says. The purpose of a school board self-evaluation is each board member has the opportunity